And I'm saying this from a rural water perspective. You'll appreciate that. When we look at rural water system, we always look at protecting existing customers equity interest and looking at new development paying its proportionate cost or in most cases its heavy proportion of cost, okay? So I think as part of your consideration or your council's consideration, we ought to be directing Mr. Heimer or the official people here, both, to be looking at not just our impact fees or contributions made of construction, what are you going to want in the contracts that you negotiate with people when they come in and want water and want sewer so that Mr. Heimer is doing some of that. On the other concurrent part of your suggestion, which is while we have been doing the planning for water and sewer and the modeling or laying the protocol for the model by doing the mapping, I think you ought to be looking at what other cities and what's reasonable to expect new development to pay for to pay for its own way.
We, I think that's going to be one of the topics. I know Mr. Councilman Miller put a budget amendment item. The Controller and I had talked prior to that and I've got some information on the water and wastewater rate increase and everything else. It's going to play some of that part, but what you're asking him to be looking at is impact fees and that's a step way down after all this.
It's like step five or six.
Yeah. And I believe that with the council, and we can back up a little bit here, with the council's, I don't know if it was directive was the right term, but the initiation of the three-year budget, a continuous three-year budget, okay, that we can over the next several months, because we're beginning to enter the budget process, we can over the next several months look at revenues over this budget cycle so that we can approve a complete contract, okay, for the water mapping, the sewer mapping, capacity studies, for ultimately the water models that we can do over a multi-year period. What the city has done in the past and your advice is very much appreciated here and adds a lot of credence. We have, we just finished a rate study. We have the land use plan going on right now that's going to address some of the zoning ordinances, is going to address some of the future use so that we don't do what has been done in the past where, oh, we want to do this, but we can only afford this much of it, so we only issue a contract for this much of it. Then the next administration comes in and issues a contract for something entirely different. We need to approve, I mean, I don't even know that the contract is the appropriate word, a plan over the next three years, four years, five years that addresses not only the mapping, the water models, the future use, what are our fees and structures going to be placed so that the next council doesn't have to recreate the wheel. And if it takes us two months or three months to do that, then so be it. The city manager has the directive to continue the work. We know this is work that needs to be done, but let's not half-step this. And there may have been some confusion on our part in your direction for an update as to where we were in the process and some confusion by Mr. Heimer as to time priorities, but this must be done and it must be done right.
And I agree that it should be done together. I have no qualms of that. I'm going to tell you right now, I have two people looking for land to build hotels and I'm like, do I want to find them land if I know we're not going to have water and sewer for them? They're willing to pay for the lines and everything, but if we don't know about the capacity and the only way to grow is north, that's why I feel like it needs to keep going and get it done.
I think we can keep it going. It's just like Mr. Andy said, the capacity is what at 60%, you kind of check that?
At the wastewater.
And I don't think that this would hold any kind of business coming in or anything and as they went into paper that all night, anybody can still come in. I don't believe that this, this year, this study here is going to stop anybody from coming in.
And this action doesn't even address that. This action doesn't address that.
I mean, I'm not against it. I'm not, I don't want anything to stop. I don't want progression to stop, you know?
I want to thank you, Andy, for, I know you've been doing a hard work. I see him there at the office all the time and he could be, they could be paying an engineer to be doing that work that he's doing and he's there day after day. I want to thank you, but they're hard work.
I just want to say these guys are doing good work, but Mr. Miller, I think that these guys are professionals. They're the, they, they should be able to come up with a timeframe, how much time it will take them to do it.
That's what we're asking.
Instead of just, you know, shoot them down because you know what? If the priority isn't in the north of Florisville, why can't they start in the north of Florisville doing whatever they have to do with their priority and then move down to where they need to be at so they can evolve and grow?
Nobody shot them down. I mean, it was just that you, you know, kind of reiterating.
Because they thought they got taken into consideration. Safety is a big thing and it isn't going to be in a rush trying to, you know, meet the requirements and that's what I'm just saying.
And that's why we, I mean, there's no constraints on time and, you know, no time frames were addressed or anything like that, but.
Okay, then I will revise my motion to table this item until the next report from the city manager.
And a motion to table by Councilman Miller, may I have a second, please?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very spicy.
Mayor, we got one of our professionals out of the way. I respectfully request that we allow Mr. Tim Bolak with TechStop to do his part or answer any questions and then some discussing with possible action on the process of review of revised speed limits and traffic control devices. He's here just in case we've got any questions on that and he's been here since the start.
All right. Thank you. You know, several concerns exist to me and have been raised to me about the speed limits. And if you drive through our city just on two major highways, if you go out 97 west towards Stockdale, it's damn near 55 miles an hour in front of that Masonic Park, but the city limits is still farther down the road. You go out 97 the other direction, by the time you get to the city park, it's 70 miles an hour. You go north in our city and by the time you get to the top of the hill before you even get to the turn into the hospital, it's 70 miles an hour. And you go south before you leave the city limits and I can't verify the exact space it, it's 70 miles an hour. But then when I read this procedures for establishing speed limits, it talks about studies, I understand that, but then it says in here, it says Texas law states that the maximum speed limit through an urban district is 30 miles an hour. And then I read in here that there are considerations above and beyond the speed studies that include residential and developed areas. Then I read in here that the district office should make every effort to meet the city's desires for speeds. And I remember a presentation that was done probably before I got in here about how long it took to do the speed studies. I will officially say here that I am damn concerned about the safety of our residents in front of a hospital 70 miles an hour, in front of a soccer park that on any given weekend has got 100-plus kids in there is an accident waiting to happen. That the speed limit of 70 miles an hour in front of the city park and in front of a major event center is excessive.
But it's slower on the business loop.
I am just flabbergasted. Now, I know that our city manager is working with TechStop to come up with some alternatives to this. I will say here officially that I hope the district office expedites those and comes back to this council with some recommendations for ordinances on speed that makes sense. And if they don't, I can also say that I don't have any problem taking it to the next step, okay? We must address that. When the traffic load in this city of semi-trucks and when the front page of the San Antonio Express News has got a fatality accident on the front page as part of the Eagle Ford, we must do something different in this town. We must and we must do it timely. And I'm, you know, if anybody on this council disagrees with me, I'm giving you my opinion as an elected official, but those speed limits are not acceptable in our city limits, you know? At no, no point within the city limits of the city of Florisville should the speed limit be 70 miles an hour at no point in this city.
And that's why we discussed it back in December?
December.
And by the hospital 50 miles an hour, once you pass the line, it's 70 miles an hour.
No, it's, you cross the top of the hill?
Going north?
Going north.
Right there by the hospital 50, once you get past it.
There's a 70 mile an hour right there as I went past there.
Right past the hospital.
Okay, can I comment on this? I know we've gone down this road before and Tim, correct me, just the other day from the county and y'all were all there with the Richardson thing, that was brought up about the speed. And the thing, the way it works is we have to request you to do a study, correct? And you can write a letter requesting a study.
Which has been done on certain parts, correct?
But if it happens, if I'm correct, like I understood him to explain, was that if it happens, you know how they roll over that black wire?
They take out cars, they do speed checks and it's based on what it says in the deal. They look at all the criteria.
But it's done at certain times, which is spring.
It's done within the school time, schools, school times as in from September to May.
Which is probably, I mean.
During, because you get that school peak time because normally during the summer you have a little less traffic because you don't have mom and dad taking kids school on your bus. So they do it during that school, in school days.
So where are we on the status of those traffic studies that have been requested?
What do you want, do we talk about?
Yeah, Dan Engelhardt has it and we've got the correspondence where a speed study request has been submitted by the local area office to the traffic office in San Antonio, attaches info on the purpose of the speed study. The speed studies are typically conducted in spring and fall semester of the school year. The traffic section will work to include the study for this spring semester. Studies are not typically conducted during the summer months. There's, there's.
We're almost at the end of the, we're in the summer.
Which location? That's what I'm asking.
For the Masonic lodges.
There are four places that I can tell you right now. 97 west, 97 east, 281 north and 281 south. 181, excuse me, 181. Those are the clear places that we must address the traffic speed. And if we, I don't know that we can wait for a fall study to change these speeds next year and we have enough development, we, from what I read in here, that we can make exception to those speed studies based upon the development, based upon public safety that, you know, we as a council can pass an ordinance and say, we want the speed limit to be 35 all the way to the speed of city limits. And if your office and this council can't come to an agreement upon it, then there's some alternatives. Before we go down that road, I'm not threatening to go down that road. I know it's an option, but I am uncomfortable in waiting until next year to address these speed limits. The truck traffic in this town is dangerous and with the summer coming up and the youth in these leagues and the events going on in our parks, we must address that before then. And I'm asking you formally to come back to this council with what you can do or cannot do about those speed limits based on the time that we have now. It's not safe.
Just like I just asked the where and the location. He said that, but what has the city requested formally?
On 97?
On 97 or everybody's school.
Yeah. Going towards TechStop.
We've requested one on 97.
She might have known that before I came to this meeting with Joe Ruanyi, I could have maybe had something for you.
Well, those are the four areas. Do anyone or? About hospital.
Get back on 410.
About the hospital.
Yeah.
Okay.
All I can say is if the city needs to make a formal request to our office, I don't think 181, 181 hasn't been on our list.
And you need a separate letter for each one, right?
I don't think we need a separate letter for each one. We have one letter requesting the location.
And I'll make the motion based upon this discussion to direct the city manager to resubmit or submit those requests to TechStop and for a response to TechStop coming back. If you can come back to us and tell us what you can and cannot do.
I mean, for the request of that, they'll get put on our list like the district office is and they will conduct those studies. I will check on the one for 97. I wasn't sure, I didn't know what y'all are looking for, so I didn't know what to look for.
And I think you kind of missed my entire point in this. I'm not comfortable being put on a list, okay? Then if the best action we can get out of the district office is to be put on a list, what are our alternatives? Does the district office have some options available to them other than these speed studies? And as I read this guy, we can come back to the district office with recommendations and I would like to do that. I would like to be able to come to a consensus with the district office for those speed limits.
We need to be aware of it, Councilman. I handed you a email, place is right there. I want to make sure that we put it on record. We did meet with county officials and reports to the Richardson Brothers, which is out of the city limits, but still in our ETJ, so that's why we met. Andy and Leanne have requested following our meeting on Richardson Brothers. TechStop plans to conduct a study of crossovers on the portions of US 181 that is divided by depressed medium from the Bear County line to Pope. We've seen an increase in development activity in Wilson County over the last couple of years and with the Eagle Ford Shield just down the road, see no reason for the increased pace of development not to continue. As property develops, if there are crossovers and when they're fronted, they locally logically want to be allowed access to the crossover. This may not be an issue in the near term, but over time, as the area becomes more developed and as intersections and crossover become signalized, it will have a detrimental effect on mobility along 181. Recently, we have begun to issue permits to crossovers for new development only if the intersection roadway is a public roadway. This helps to bring a broader local transportation perspective into the discussion to better give opportunities for discussions of potential local roadway networks that could possibly improve traffic circulation beyond the state highway system. A recent example being the McCoy's building supply development north side of Florisville. The purpose of the study will be to see if there are operational improvements and can be made converting US 181 to a super street type of facility in order to preserve as much as possible into the future traffic capacity of US 181. The study will indicate the traffic benefits of closing some crossovers or limiting access to some crossovers such as converting some dedicated U-turns. A good example would be Loop 604 behind Randolph Road. The super street design concept limits crossing and left turn traffic and crossover in places and will strategically place U-turns to indirectly provide for left turn and thorough access. Limiting access at crossover reduces the potential for traffic conflict and extends the useful service life of the facility. The study has not yet begun, but we anticipate the study will be underway in the near future. We welcome the opportunity for input from the city of Florisville and Wilson County throughout this process. In addition, no changes indicated by the study would be made in the existing US 181 facility without the support of the county offices. We need to make sure that we're aware of the study that they're going to start doing and that's going to be, I think they've done that on 87 where they're going to work for a, what they call it, a super street. So one of the speed limits is going to be, of course, our, our biggest.
Agreed, agreed. I'm more concerned immediately about the hospital, the city park, the Masonic Park, as well as the event center piece of this. These are areas where the speed limit is unsafe, okay? And as I read this, I think we can adjust that and I think we can come to an agreement on adjusting that without the studies or with the support of the studies, but on the pure basis of safety and would encourage your office and the city manager's office to come up with a plan that we can deal with in a timely manner. And I'm going to read, adjust my motion to task the city manager to work with TechStop for a proposal coming back to this council on those three areas. 97 west as it affects the event center and the city park, 97 east, school, the Masonic Park, and 181 north as it addresses the hospital. Those are areas where it is clearly unsafe. Council?
Do you want to address the possible coordination in the three existing traffic lights?
I think that's something that we should clearly be doing as well as we grow. I don't know if you've had the privilege of driving on 181 immediately before school or immediately after school and because our traffic lights are not synchronized, the traffic backs up across other lights. That clearly needs to be addressed either at those times or constantly. And I don't know if that's a possibility or.
I don't, I don't, I know how to maintain and know how to kind of get them to work and right, but I don't know the ins and outs of what it takes to synchronize like. I can't answer that, but we can look into it.
Thank you.
Now, Tim, isn't there a catch? I think that you had said that these studies can work in reverse also?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Well, it doesn't say that it works in reverse. The whole deal, the study, study says it's based on 85% of what the travel department feels safe to travel.
Because it could, like if we have it at 50 and that study could say that it should be at 60.
I understand that. My point in reading this, or my point, my comments, was this provides the guidelines to set speed limits based upon rate studies, but it also recognizes that the rate study doesn't take into account the fact that children are playing right on the side of the road and that the rate study doesn't take into account that this is a residential area or that the rate study doesn't take into account that there is a big event center that's going to have a lot of in and out traffic or there's a city park there. And as such, gives you the ability to adjust those speed limits based upon those considerations.
Because we have all that added big truck traffic too.
That's why I asked, and thank you, Councilor, for getting this information to us. It was informative and I appreciate you taking the time to come back and hopefully your office will be able to work with the city manager's office to come up with some alternatives to us in the very near future. So, was this a discussion?
This is discussion.
Discussion, no action?
Possible action.
This is possible action. I make the motion to direct the city manager's office to work with TechStop to address the speed limit issues and the light synchronization issues and come back to this council within the next 45 days with a response.
Okay, can I have a second to that?
A second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I was going to ask you, we can move this to the 4C because what's concerned is going to be somewhere you never. Which one?
All opposed?
I don't know. Look at that eye.
Motion very spicy.
I want to jump in, we'll hit you to the point.
Yes, we're talking about 4C, right?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on to 4C, discussion and possible action concerning appropriate city procedure when the planning and zoning commission has denied or effectively denied a rezoning petition. Example, the effective denial for want of a motion to approve rezoning from residential R1 to commercial at 1716 C Street and 1718 C Street in the absence of an appeal by the petitioner.
I want to speak to a little bit of this if you don't mind, Andy. I know you're the person on here and correct me if I'm wrong. And I'll tell you, I've met with Mr. Gonzalez, I've talked with Mr. Vipon who sends his apologies, but his wife is in the hospital recovering from surgery and unable to attend on behalf of the planning and zoning committee. I also spoke with one of the board, the committee members, Jim LaHa, who called me to inform me what had happened. Now, just to refresh our memory, there was a planning and zoning committee meeting on Mr. Gonzalez's application for rezoning that his application got tabled because there was a dispute or concern over the boundaries. As I understand it, that issue has been resolved. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Then, at the next planning and zoning, this issue was also brought up at the city council meeting two meetings ago. And Mr. Vipon said that if in fact the boundary issue was resolved, he would present it back to that committee with his recommendation for approval. That's what I heard. Then there was a planning and zoning meeting and there was some discussion, but no action was taken, no motion was taken to approve or deny this application. I understand that some on the committee made the comment that if he changed his application from commercial to business, that they would be comfortable with it or that they would approve it. I find such an action by that board inappropriate. The planning and zoning committee is to review applications based upon their face value. I understand that members of the board had heard a rumor that Mr. Gonzalez was going to put in a man camp. We cannot make decisions on boards or as a council based upon rumors. We must make decisions based upon the applications that are in front of us. Furthermore, even if this was approved and Mr. Gonzalez intended to put in a man camp, he would have to come back to the planning and zoning for a special use permit. Is that correct, Ms. Nicholas? And the current moratorium would deny that as it relates to mobile home parks and RV parks and that sort of thing. So this seems to have been a rumor of spin, not fact. Now, do I like the idea of approving the rezoning of property to commercial versus I don't know that I'm comfortable with that. However, we don't have any rules in place today that would prevent the approval of the rezoning of that property. As a matter of fact, the property directly across the street, as I understand it, is zone commercial.
Actually, the whole block by 90 percent.
Is already zone commercial. Now, will our new zoning ordinances and our land use plan address that? Probably, but we cannot take action on that application based on rules that we expect to be coming forward. On a side note with this, and I'm sorry, I'll get off my box in a minute. We appoint people to boards and to committees that have told us that they want to serve. I read in the paper that we had another board that failed to have a meeting because of lack of a quorum. I find that unacceptable. I find that unacceptable. And as such, I'm going to ask the city manager to put on the agenda at the next city council meeting consideration and action for appointments to all of our boards. Because we must have people on our boards and committees that are willing to do it. The planning and zoning committee's job is to approve or deny or ask for additional information. It is not their job to take no action. Now, it is incumbent upon us as a council to give these boards and committees the tools necessary to do their jobs. We had, council in the past has not done that with the planning and zoning commission or board or committee. I think we are moving forward in that direction with the land use plan and the ordinances, the zoning ordinances that are gonna be forthcoming. And the feedback I'm getting from dealing with Stewart and Company has been very, very positive. But that doesn't change the fact that this has been lack of action. And there's some question, do we have the authority to override this? I think we do, at this point in the game, based upon the inactions of that committee. And I will ask the question of our compliance officer before I make my motion. Is there any reason by ordinance that we should be denying this application for rezoning from residential to commercial?
According to what Mr. Rosenberg is giving me here, it says here, please note that as per state law, the planning commission does not have the authority to deny a plat that meets all the requirements of ordinances for land use. Again, what the zoning commission does and what you guys do is approving for land use. Is that correct, sir?
Okay, now, now...
That happens to see plat, it's the same principle with the fire.
So, I'm gonna repeat my question. Is there any ordinance or reason based on current ordinances or current policies in the city that would cause this application not...
Now, now, I am very upset that, that there was no action taken by P and Z. But I also am looking at an application that, to me, is not complete. You know, I don't, what is, what was planning and zoning supposed to vote on? I mean, I mean, it, what is, what is it?
Changed it from residential to commercial. That's what they're voting on.
He has to deed, he has to deed, he owns the place.
Was there any... I don't care about that, that's not, that's not...
Was the application incomplete?
No, sir.
And the only reason, I went to that meeting, and the only reason the planning and zoning...
I have, that's why I'm asking the question.
The planning and zoning said, well, we'll approve it if you go business. And that wasn't their, their job to say that. And that was, that came from LaHa, what was his name?
Jim LaHa.
Jim LaHa. And I think that was bad. And what I think, and I wanted him to be here, and I'm sorry, his wife, whatever, but, you know, when he sits upstairs and says, the boundary issue has already, I resisted my vote 'cause I was gonna try to pass it at that time. And he says, I guarantee by the next meeting, this will be resolved. A meeting passed, didn't resolve. I went to the other meeting, and they said, let the city council vote on. That was their answer. Let, let, it should be on the minutes, 'cause I was there when I heard it. They said, let, just let the city council. And then, when the other young woman that was there for the salon, they went ahead and denied that one. But they couldn't, they couldn't, then I asked Lambert after the meeting. I told Lambert, what was the deal here? You know, no, no, the boundary issue is not an issue. Well, then, why didn't you vote? Well, they, they wanted a business. And, and to me, it was all just a waste of time. And this should have been passed a while back. And he went on record, I think we had it on, we don't need to put it out, but we had it on the minutes that, what was his name?
Vipon.
Vipon said that it was, it was a done deal, you know, 'cause the boundaries were taken care of.
And the commission never said that...
And to me, trying to force you to go to a business when the whole block is commercial, it's...
Now, educate me a little bit, okay? I'm, you, you may mention that it has to, with all the information given forth, you know, to the, you know, to P and Z, correct? Was everything given to P and Z? Does P and Z need to see the floor plans? Does P and Z need to see anything? It just needs to see that, that is wanting to zone, zone it commercial?
Exactly, land use, what the land is...
For the land use, and then at future...
And starts building...
Permanent process, permanent process.
Construction would go through all of that.
If you lose the applicant, if, if they bring in pictures, concept plans to, to let the commission know, this is what we, this is the kind of business. I mean, we need to...
And that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking the questions, you know, being part of, of, you know, getting educated here. But if ninety percent of the property is a rezoned commercial, then I mean, there should be no reason to, to, for, for not becoming commercial 'cause you have to put whatever, you know, commercial business you want at this time.
There was no reason to want to change it to business. I mean, it should have been taken as the application.
Either the, either the P and Z should have approved or denied, and allowed the process for appeal. And instead of forcing Mr. Gonzalez to go through another planning and zoning committee meeting and either getting it approved or denied and having to go through a process of appeal based upon the comments that Ms. Nichols has given me that this application is complete, that there is no ordinance or legal reason to prevent it from being approved, I'm going to make the motion to approve the request of the rezoning from commercial R1, oh, correction, residential R1 to commercial at seventeen sixteen C and seventeen eighteen C Street.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Villallegas. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
And please make note of my request for the council agenda at the next meeting for all board appointments. That includes four A, four B, planning and zoning, Parks Foundation, and any other appointments that we make for this council.
And maybe we can also put a little article or something in the paper of anybody that's interested. Or just, you know, write a, something, I don't know. Or maybe the newspaper did it for us.
So now I can have Mark build a... I can have, wait for that bank of security service?
You bet.
So I can put all my money in that?
Okay, I see, I see. Let's get that in there.
Three D.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to three D. Consideration and action to ratify plat as a Lone Oaks subdivision is filed in the county records of Wilson County, Texas. Mr. Rosenberg.
That, Madam Mayor, is moot. I think I gave all the council members a memo on that. At least I hope it got everybody.
It did, I concur.
Okay. And so, I don't think if it requires any action, unless you want to take action.
Well, let me just ask one little question, wait a second.
Two words.
Is, is there something that happened here that we need to do something differently so that this doesn't occur again?
No, I gotta, I, I've gotta take some responsibility for it. I used as a source document, and the reason that I was, I guess, is I used as a source document the appraisal district, thinking that it wouldn't be recorded in appraisal district if it wasn't the identical item with what was recorded in the county clerk. Because ordinarily, the appraisal district takes all the documents from the county clerk. And I've talked to Eva, and she can't tell me how it got to the appraisal district without a date. And so I, the learning lesson, I guess, is don't ever trust appraisal district, go to Eva first.
I, I...
And I'm not being facetious, I mean, I'm sounding facetious, but the issue for me was, is I wanted to make sure, because this came up in, not discovery, but in the open records. And I didn't want us to be naked on the date because the council had approved it and kept the signatures all there. But it did reflect the date. And, and so I wanted to be sure that the council had acted on it, and staff filled me in on the time that they acted on it. And so the only thing I can tell you is, go to Eva at the district court, I mean, the county clerk's office first. Don't rely on the appraisal district, it's the first source.
My, my concern is twofold, one, so that we don't...
I mean, and I'm not sure how it got there like it did, okay?
And, and then the second piece is, how much time did we end up spending on this and what did this cost us, you know, so that we don't end up doing that again or going down that road?
I, I can get you some idea on the cost, but I can't tell you.
Five dollars, taken. Okay, so we don't have to take the motion?
No, it's a move I haven't, I haven't solidly reported. And that's what I want the ministry to play, the items properly reported.
Okay, then we're gonna continue. Item, consideration and action on budget amendment to reflect changes resulting from new water and sewer rate ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna ask to table this till the next meeting based upon the discussions that we had as it relates to the water and sewer models. I will state, however, that in the future, when we as a council make decisions about new revenues, that we must, at the same time, look at how that affects us financially and take these steps with budget amendments. We cannot take steps as a council to add revenue, okay? It may not be required statutorily. But just as in the same manner as we cannot go looking for sewer lines without documenting where all our water lines are and, and doing this thing full fold, we can't half-step things and approving revenue without seeing how it's gonna impact us budgetarily. And the accompanying budget amendment shouldn't be done just from a fiscal perspective and a long-term planning perspective. And I would hope that the council in the future would consider that as well as city staff when we start to present new revenues to this council.
We've got, and I'd like to visit with you next week so we can go over some of the stuff on the budget, point taken.
A second.
May I make the table?
Let's table.
Table till the next meeting.
Add him in till the next meeting. Would you make sure to get him in? Second by Eric, Councilman, oh, Councilman Manos.
Eric Manos.
Too late. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
And Mayor, may I just make...
No breaks.
Make one comment on the last item. I will make a number to pull out all the related costs of the last item.
To be deducted off of our...
Thank you, Lou.
Is that to be deducted off of our...
No, it's, it's not. It's, I don't think it will currently. You see a lot of items on there that's marginal charge.
I know, I know. Okay, item four, discussion, possible action. Eight, discussion and possible action concerning matters of code compliance, including but not limited to windy lots, junk vehicles, et cetera. Councilman, get it?
Vehicles?
Vehicles.
Vehicles, vehicles.
Now, uh...
Cars. Watch this.
Okay, yeah, I put this on the agenda because I've been getting calls throughout the year. And I had one here a couple of weeks ago, and I got with you on that. An individual called me and he said that his house, the, the, oh...
Appraisal district.
Appraisal district raises the value of his house. And he called me over, he says, I want you to come over here and take a look at my house. So I went over there and hit the home. And he says, take a look, go in the backyard, take a look to the right, and take a look to the left. He says, how in the world do you think I'm ever gonna sell this house? They had a truck up on stilts, there are no wheels on it. Had his trailer, little travel trailer in the back. I don't tell him what was going on over there. Junk everywhere. So Andy and I went and drove by there. Who's our code compliance? But I think you sent an officer.
Jesse?
She gets help from the police department, depending on...
And they went over there and they took care of it. They took care of the, the trucks were removed, the trailer was removed, but the junk was left there, okay? And that's just one. I think we need to find a way that, that we clean up the city not only during peanut festival week, that's what we do, peanut festival. But we need to find a way where we can get the citizens to help out. And I don't know whether we can issue notices when we send out our statements and saying, hey, we need to clean up the city. And I don't know if we're gonna, you know, go by there, or I don't know who we can get to.
I, I have a recommendation, sir. A few years ago, we had a committee called, it was a Unified Florisville Initiative. And it was a group of staff and administration. And we'd get our heads together to do something like that. You know, what can we do to make our city look better? Get community involvement, volunteering, things like that. It was doing well for a while, but it kind of, you know, kind of died away. Maybe that's something we could think about bringing back again. But have more community involvement.
We need to get the community involved.
Because we could, we could have, like, citizen off patrol. I mean, that sounds, but, you know...
I think we need to take a first step in this one. And the first step was to give them the self-ability to do that. We have current ordinances in place when it talks to what you can and cannot do in your yards. Our contract with our refuse provider allows for scheduled bulk pickup on, once or twice a year, that they're gonna do brush and bulk pickup. Let's try to coordinate notifying our citizens of what the ordinance is and when these bulk crash days will go out so that we give them the opportunity to self-correct. Then, we can come around and, for those that do not self-correct, okay? Start using some other efforts to do that. But we've just gotta give them that opportunity to self-correct. I know we've got unpublished days for when these are gonna be done. I think that's something you can coordinate with Republic as to when they can do that. Thinking early summer is probably a good time to be looking at this. And then also notifying our citizens when these other days are gonna be. So those that wanna do the tree trimming and that other stuff can plan, there, there's stuff around that. I know other communities do a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup campaign, and we may do it as a citywide campaign. But let's give the citizens the opportunity to first self-police.
Some places are, they're, they're fire hazard. Some have pallets, stacks of pallets, weeds. And I wish we could do something with that first and sandage, that old Joe Estrada peanut gin. We got all that, all those equipment that's just there. He's not doing nothing with it.
But, you know, maybe if we looked at this as a, a community cleanup plan, we coordinate the efforts of the code compliance to tag some of these houses and say, hey, you're in violation of the code, but here's the cleanup day. And, and we make a concerted effort to first, give them the ability to self-correct. Secondly, help, hey, you, some motivation to self-correct before we start taking other...
And perhaps, you know, if, if you're gonna, you know, send out some information to them, give them a preview of what the fines could possibly be.
Yeah, well, they have ten days. Once they're notified, they have ten days to...
So do we have, like, a cleanup, like, something to put on the, like, once they're three quarter in the way there?
We have the drop-off in our wastewater treatment plant that we do.
I mean, I don't know what they call it, but I mean, there's something to...
No, I think our contract with the waste, with Republic allows for one or two times a year, no?
It used to be one...
They have to, no, not even them, but they have to take it and, and take it to our wastewater treatment plant. They can take as much as they want to those days, but they have to take it.
But let's go back to Republic.
But I don't know, we can maybe look into talking to the trash company and saying, maybe once a year, because, you know, it might be a senior citizen that can't carry it so far out and say, well, unless you have a truck or... Oh, the truck, or, I mean, I don't know. I know it's more money, but at the same time, I think they deserve it each once a year.
Well, the mayor, yes, sir, the mayor was on me pretty much all week about the, trying to figure out, she said...
She says she wants the contact made with Republic, see, and her favorite word is free, to see if they can incorporate that into, uh, one of the deals, or how much, uh, cost it will pay.
If we have, like, a cleanup week, or cleanup month, and then we ask them, all the people, because right now's when they're all working on their yards and stuff, to put everything out on the street, and then we get the trash company to pick it up. Because like, the same reason that Mario said, a lot of these are elderly, you know, they don't have the means to go and lug it. At least they're making the effort of cleaning up.
And let's look to, uh, uh, July, or, or early July, you know, Florisville Clean Day. That gives us an opportunity to negotiate with Republic, advertise it, tag some of the people that need some motivation to clean up. Uh, we want to, you know, obviously, the ten days is what the ordinance says, but we're gonna wanna do this as kind of a, "Hey, cleanup day's coming in two weeks, and you'll have the opportunity." Uh, I think that's a good way of doing it, and then if it works out well, we can look at doing this twice a year.
When's the code compliance committee meeting?
That's the next question, is when you and I meet. Uh, I asked Andy to... Next code compliance meeting. Because we need to include some city staff in that. Maybe Andy can coordinate something for that.
Monday?
Would you be game on having a Block of the Month and stuff? Like, in the blocks, like, they have all their night houses?
It's, it's the mayor's privilege to, to deem whatever block she wants in the city as the mayor's Block of the Month, doesn't it?
All right, I like that.
Andy, are we spraying for mosquitoes again this year?
Uh, who is looking at it? The young lady behind you is working on that as we speak. Yes, we, we already started getting calls, they're out already.
Yes.
Because a lot of them coming up from that same trash that we're talking about, because the water stays in there, so...
But it's an issue of cost. So, we're looking at different, yes.
She's working on it.
I thought we had our own truck that went around blowing it out.